This evening, on this beautiful day. We've had quite a few beautiful days here in Long Beach, particularly on the beach. And I myself just got back from Puerto Rico taking care of my dad. And the weather over there was just magnificent until we heard about this horrible news in Orlando. And we're so glad. I wasn't able to be here for the vigil that evening, that the city, you know, did spend a moment of silence. And of course, we had numerous speakers, including Ms. Moore, who was the city council with us, speak. In the town where I was with my father, apparently there were two parents that my father knew that had to come into Orlando to identify their sons. And just a horrendous period. So again, you know, my heart goes out to those families. A couple of things we'd like to remind everyone about tonight's meeting. During the meeting, we ask that you sign up for good and welfare. If you'd like to make a comment, if you'd like to ask a question, you're absolutely welcome to do that. But we need you folks to sign up for that during the meeting. Once the meeting's over, then of course, you can't sign up after that. But that would be at the end of the meeting. And during the meeting, folks, you know that when we ask for comments from the public, there's a three-minute limit. And very simply, because we need to hear from everyone that wants to say something about the particular items that we're discussing and voting on tonight. And your very last, and also just as important, it's so important for us to keep in the quorum here. It's a governmental function. It's important that we respect one another, although we may not agree fully on what you hear and what the comments are. And with that, folks, I will turn over the meeting to our Mr. Frayson.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of City of Long Beach on Tuesday, June 21st, 2016 at 7:00 p.m. While local, Councilmember Goggins?
Here.
Councilmember Mandel?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice President Malco?
Here.
President Torres?
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Jack Shearman and Corporation Council Director XDC, and that is a salute to the flag.
Mr. Frayson, would you lead us tonight? Is there any pledge of allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and with that, we're going to begin our meeting with the update from our City Manager Jack Shearman.
The city wishes to thank everyone who joined us on Wednesday, June 15th. Our vigil, as we stick together in solidarity with the LGBT community, communities in Orlando, Florida, to remember the lives lost in census violence. The event was led by Councilwoman Moore and also included the work of Councilmembers Paramo Goggins, Mandel, and legislator Ford, LGBT Network CEO David Kilnick, and several other community leaders. Today's is International Surf Day, presented by SpooN Surf, Curly, and Piecrack Pizza. Activities have been going on all day, including a chance to meet famous surf photographer Clark Little, free surf lessons, and a viewing of the movie Short Break at the Albreia this evening. South Nassau Community Hospital will be offering free blood pressure screenings this Friday, June 24th, from 12:00 to 12:00 on the boardwalk at Riverside Boulevard. Summer camps for both recreation and youth and family services will be starting Monday, June 27th at 9:00 a.m. They run through August 19th, providing numerous safe, exciting, and age-appropriate activities for children between 5 and 12 of age. Building on the success of summers past, will be an unprecedented variety of food options on the beach and boardwalk this summer. Five new conference stations will be home to adversarial cuisine, so they help the options further enhancing the local flavor and extending the length of the season. General Brew has been open now for a few weeks on a national, and other concessions are expected to open shortly. Sample menus for the new concessions can be found at longbeachlife.com. All of the options are listed on the map, which can be downloaded and viewed on the city's website. Movies on the Beach returns for the season this Saturday night, June 25th, on Lafayette Beach with a showing of The Princess Bride. Movies on the Beach series presented by the West End Neighbors Civic Association, West Home Civic, Northeast Bay Canal Civic Association, cooperation with the city with support from local sponsors. Next Wednesday, Wednesday, June 29th, at 7:00 p.m., the Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation will be holding a public meeting right here in City Hall. This meeting will provide an overview, Contract One, growing construction and rehabilitation, and Contract Two, sand placement of forduings and beaches for the upcoming storm damage reduction project. Subjects to be covered include a general project overview, construction schedule, and the logistics surrounding project implementation. Our free summer concert series kicks off July 3rd, Long Beach Boulevard with the Ahuta Green and Orchestra. Visit the city's website for a complete schedule. The Long Beach Department of Parks Recreation will host the Fourth of July, it's 4K, I'm guessing it's 5K, race and children's 1K race on Monday, July 4th. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/frag. Mark McGowan, the city's annual fireworks extravaganza takes place on Friday, July 8th at 8:00 p.m. And in 2016, our craft festival will continue all weekend long, featuring more than 200 artists and craft vendors. Visit the city's website for more information. And as a reminder, yearly parking permits for Long Island Railroad parking garage in Long Beach are due to expire June 30th. New 2016-17 current permits are on sale now. To accommodate commuters, special hours are being set up to purchase permits in the City Clerk's Office, including smart night, from 5 to 7:15 p.m. And finally, this evening, this reminder, the farmer's market is open Wednesdays and Saturdays from 2:00 to 2:00. In addition, Arts in the Plaza is open in Tenny Plaza every Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 through November 23rd. See you there.
Thank you. Mr. Frayson. Just one great comment before we begin. You know, the hearings, the public meetings regarding the Army Corps of Engineer project and reengineering our beach and the building up, the construction of the quarries is extremely important for everyone to understand what that means and what's involved. We encourage everyone to attend the meetings. With that, Mr. Frayson, we're ready.
First vote in the hearing tonight is for resolution granting waiver of water treatment requirements for premise 776 West Beach Street for shaved ice storm.
Okay, with that, a little bit of the hearing. Is the owner of the business here tonight?
I'm the landlord, the owner.
Okay, please come forward. We just need your name and address for the record. And I'll ask some very simple questions that we ask all of the businesses that are beginning. Welcome, sir.
My name is Joe Aoriel. My place of business is 770 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York.
Okay. The very first question we ask is, of course, because it is a public hearing that we're having, is what is the nature of this business?
When they approached us, it's for an ice machine that shaves ice differently than just scoop it out. It's more of a novelty, a hot flavoring. They're not going to have, it's walking along the street.
Right, right. It's home, like it's home. Yes.
And it's labor.
And how many employees do you think?
I believe it's going to be two or three.
Two employees? And what are the hours of operation?
I think it's going to be, they told me, from 9:00 to 9:00.
And the, one of the last questions that we, do you expect, and at all, any curbside deliveries?
Any deliveries will be done, mostly, mostly, it's just, they make their own ice on purpose and they shake it. Food fillings or coverings that are delivered to them.
The reason we ask that question is, of course, because it is a off-street parking permit that we're issuing. When, if you have trucks delivering things, it's important for us to know when that'll be. And then the very last question, this is also a very new question that we've been asking, is if the owner, in this case, the business owner, is interested in having a bicycle ride installed in the facility? Absolutely. Okay, very good. So, we encourage you to stay until the end of the meeting. We have known exactly our vote on this. And again, welcome. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public on this new business beginning and flavored ice treat that will have to be accounted? Okay, since I see your names, we will close the hearing with this.
Our second is a resolution granting waiver of water treatment requirements for premise 772 West Beach Street for the rail system management office.
Okay. Okay, with that, a little bit of this hearing. Is the owner of this property or this business here with us this evening? Welcome, sir. Again, we need your name and address for the record.
Matthew Aoriel, 193 Sheridan Boulevard, Minneola, New York.
Okay, and it'll be the same standard questions. What is the nature of the business that you're owning?
It's a property management and asset management company.
I see, management. Okay. And how many employees would you expect to have?
Currently, three.
Three. Okay, and the hours of operation?
Nine to five.
And do you would all expect any kind of curbside delivery?
No.
Okay, very good. And the very last question is, the, if you're interested in having a bicycle ride, that's the right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Again, thank you, sir. Please stay with us until the end of the meeting so that you'll know exactly the vote.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Come on. Thank you. Are there any comments from the council on this property management? Any con, questions or comments from the public on the property management that's asked for a permit? Okay, with that, we will close the hearing on this.
Okay. Onto the regular calendar. Item 1 is resolution granting waiver of water treatment requirements for premise 776 West Beach Street. The hearing's been held on this item already. Item 2 is resolution granting waiver of water treatment requirements for premise 772 West Beach Street. The hearing's been held on this item already. Excuse me. Item 3 is resolution reminding of adopting the City of Long Beach Employee Policy Manual.
Okay, it is the goal of the city to promote a workplace that is free from discrimination and harassment while promoting equal employment opportunities. Since its enactment in 2007, the city's employee policy manual is periodic and reviewed to keep it current with applicable state and federal policies and to incorporate any necessary changes. The city's policy currently contains language regarding non-discrimination against an equality on the basis of sex. We're amending the policy to further safeguarding to ensure that no discrimination shall be tolerated when it comes to an employee's gender identity, self-image, appearance, or expression.
Very good. And are there any comments from the council on item number three? Any comments, questions from the public? Yes, Matthew, please come forward.
Originally came, to remind you, I think none of you are going to take up this split tonight.
Then, Mr. Ford, first, we need your name and address for the record.
Joanne Ford of Northwood here. And I have a copy of tonight's intended speech and, I think, July 7th.
Speech.
Okay, my name is Joanne Ford of Northwood here. I'm here tonight to once again request the inclusion of gender identity and gender expression in the City of Long Beach's employment non-discrimination law. Medical scientists say atypical gender identity, transgenderism, is a birth variation, similarly recognized for a path to this. I feel masculine appearing and/or behaving women, and feminine appearing and/or behaving men, who are straight and not transgender, are also a birth variation. Many of those people experience harmful discrimination, similar to transgender people's experience. It's important to, for you to protect both people with an atypical gender identity and an atypical gender expression in your city's law. Because, one, many Long Beach people still experience and live in fear of harmful discrimination. Two, a law has a powerful impact on the morality of the community. And three, a law tells people that it will be enforced locally. Our government recently issued an executive order protecting gender identity from harmful discrimination. However, an executive order is only enforceable as long as a new governor allows it to be enforced. Even if a law is eventually passed by the state, it does not negate the deed through a more local city law. The state law now protects race, religion, and other classes of people, yet those classes of people are also protected in your law. I believe Long Beach's law duplicates the state law in many areas because of the powerful moral message it sends to local people from local people, people you're passing the street, your neighbors. A city law also verifies everyone that harmful discrimination is not tolerated in the City of Long Beach and will be enforced in the City of Long Beach. So, once again, I ask you to include gender identity and gender expression in the City of Long Beach's employment non-discrimination law. Thank you. Do I have a copy?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We just distributed it. Thank you so much for coming up and for sharing that with us, and it's something that we will consider. Are there any other comments? Sir, please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Kilnick, Center East.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Oh, good evening. My name is David Kilnick. I'm the chief executive officer of the LGBT Network. The LGBT Network is the region's largest LGBT nonprofit organization. We have four LGBT community centers in Nassau, Suffolk County, and one in Cleveland, and hopefully someday soon here in Long Beach as well. We're also the organizers of Long Island Pride and Pride Fest, which will be moved into this great city next year, from June 9th to 11th, 2017. You know, discrimination can be an everyday experience for many transgender people and can affect nearly every area of life. The National Transgender Discrimination Survey showed that 26% of trans people lost a job due to bias. 50% were harassed on the job. 20% were evicted or denied housing, and 78% of transgender students were harassed or assaulted. Clear non-discrimination laws covering gender identity and expression are an important part of the solution because they can help stop discrimination before it happens. Clear laws often cause businesses to have policies against discrimination and train employees to follow these policies, which is something the LGBT Network can provide to all businesses here in Long Beach and throughout Nassau and southern counties. However, laws on the books don't always translate into actual fair treatment. Another important step for government is to take, another important step for governments to take is to issue guidance or rules about what the law means, such as by stating that transgender people have the right to use sex-specific facilities that match who they are. With this resolution and amendment to the current policy, Long Beach is doing exactly what is needed and is an example of the type of policy that should be implemented from Minneola to Albany and everywhere in between. I am deeply proud of the City of Long Beach, City Manager Jack Shearman, the entire Long Beach City Council, for reaffirming a deep commitment to all of its presidents and families. And I couldn't be happier and more proud that we will be bringing Long Island Pride and Pride Fest in 2017 to the city on Long Island that has the most advanced legislation protecting the trans community and one that values and celebrates the diversity of humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilnick. And thank you for coming this evening. I see, we have another person coming up. Please come forward, man. We just need your name and address for the record.
Yes, Julie Gray Owens. I'm the executive director of LITAC, the Long Island Transgender Advocacy Coalition. I'm here tonight to advocate for the passage of legislation that will add the person's gender identity and gender expression to the city's list of anti-discrimination protections for its employees. Due to the fact that there are no statewide or countrywide, county-wide explicit legal protections in place for the transgender community, the importance of this legislation cannot be stressed enough. In a national transgender survey, just on topic of employment, it was found that transgender people were four times more likely to have an annual income of less than $10,000. Over a quarter of the respondents lost their jobs when coming out, and 1 in 5 admitted to working in an underground economy, dealing drugs or becoming sex workers just in order to survive. Members of our community face uphill battles every day, dealing with hate and discrimination. Many lose their jobs, their homes, and their families when they finally come out. I urge you to vote in favor of the language to change to protect my community. Make no mistake about it, your vote tonight will impact other municipalities around the state as well as various levels of government. Your determination to show that no constituent be denied the rights that all New Yorkers enjoy will show Nassau County legislators that a simple amendment to clarify the term gender, so that the county's civil rights law must be passed and passed immediately. Your belief that no New York state citizen should suffer indignities, discrimination, and violence will send a strong message to the New York State Legislature that denying civil rights is wrong and must be rectified. I applaud Long Beach City Manager Jack Shearman for leading this change in the Long Beach civil rights protection. Your compassion and strength is greatly appreciated. I want to thank each and every member of the city council for considering this bill. Your vote to pass this legislation will show your leadership, your courage to do what is right, and your people love for the city and its people. Your vote for the passage of this important language will be a legacy to your time as a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Again, I want to thank all three, Ms. Ford and Mr. Kilnick, and Ms. Owens for coming this evening and speaking on behalf of this very important legislation that we're about to pass. You know, Long Beach has always been a community that believes in fairness, and we want to welcome people. I know that I, when I first came here, was welcomed by this community, and I'm very proud to say that I'm a part of Long Beach. And this is why we, as a council, feel this is such an important part of the job and the work that we were elected to do. Thank you. And are there any other comments on this item number three? Very important legislation that we will be voting on later on. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next item.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to pay administrative costs under the Emergency Tenant Protection Act, authorizing the gas and oil administrative costs to the owners of the buildings included under such act, directing the city control to make billing therefore.
Okay. Annually, the Emergency Tenant Protection Act directs that each city, town, or building that participates in the system of rent regulation share the cost of administering the system, set costs or budgeted, and paid to the Division of Housing and Community renewal annually by resolution.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council on item number four? Okay, on the Emergency Tenant Protection Act? Any comments from the public on this item number four, the Emergency Tenant Protection Act? Very important legislation to be going on also. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next item.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to extend the current agreement for animal shelter shots.
Proper care of animals in Long Beach is a priority to the city, and touch, test, rescue is definitely the ability to care for animals, promote adoption awareness, and promote community engagement through education and adoption events. They've worked successfully with the city, and it's our desire to extend that contract for an additional three years.
Okay, and certainly, very well taken point. Any comments from the council? Anyone? Any comments on the animal shelter we have and the people that we have brought into the fold here in Long Beach to take care of animals? Any questions for the public? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next item.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase replacement parts to primary clarifier as a water pollution control plant and water supply.
It is necessary to have replacement parts on hand as the primary clarifier is an essential piece of equipment for the treatment process of sewage. Funds are provided from the capital improvement plan.
I need a little more clarification on that. What exactly is this clar, or clarification? Is the commissioner available to? What exactly is this legislation that we're looking at with this purchase that we're doing?
That purchase is a simple bid. You allow us to purchase parts on an absentee basis so that we can keep the primary clarifier working.
Okay. And what does the clarifier do?
It's part of the overall process. It's one of the many different stages of treating, you know, the ways to, ways to treat the facility.
I see. I see. Very good. Very good. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for being here. Okay, any questions or comments from the council? How about the public? Any questions or comments on the clarification treatment stage that, you know, we could be able to purchase these parts and keep the, what we do legal and clean with our environmental requirements? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next item.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to, entering to an agreement for drainage, venting, and electrical renovations to the city's swimming pool.
As a result of superstorm Sandy, the city's swimming pool located at the natatorium and recreation center sustained extensive damage. Engineering and design services were performed earlier this year, and the actual repairs and renovations are required at this time. This work should not cause any closures of the facility. Funding is being provided through public assistance grant monies from FEMA.
Very good. Very good. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? This is on, needs to upgrade our electric system in the, the pool area in the recreation. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next item.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter to agreement for the furnishing and installation of new doors in the city's ice arena and water supply.
As a result of superstorm Sandy, the exterior and interior doors at the city's ice arena were exposed to saltwater corrosion and sustained extensive damage. This work can be completed while the facility is open. Funding to replace the doors is being provided through public assistance grant monies from FEMA.
Okay. Any comments from the council on these new doors that we're installing at the recreation center at the skating rink? How about comments from the public on these new doors that we must replace at the skating rink? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our next item.
Item 9 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to amend the agreement for engineering services in conjunction with the rehabilitation of the sand filter and filter building at the wastewater treatment plant.
Sand filter is part of the wastewater treatment plant that removes solids from the effluent fire to discharge. These services are necessary to meet requirements enclosed by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. This amendment will cover the construction inspection costs to oversee the necessary work. Funds are provided from the capital improvement plan.
Okay. Certainly, an important part of our function as government. Any comments from the council on this item? How about comments from the public? Very important item that we have here that we're going to be voting on. Okay, then we'll move on to our next item.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter to a contract for street lighting and indoor repair.
The city rewrote our package to meet and comply with all the new specifications needed for the maintenance of the lights that have been installed throughout the city over the past year, specifically LED and induction lighting. This has resulted in a savings to the city by cutting our monthly maintenance costs approximately $100.
Very, very. Certainly important for us. Any comments from the council on the lighting? Comments from the public on the lighting that we're installing? Okay, we'll move on to our next item.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds for the conversion of the existing ornitorium to the parish wall and sanctuaries of the island into a basketball court.
Okay, this project was approved by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development 400.
Okay, very good. Very good. Just a question, when, what is this going to happen? Will we have this summer?
I actually don't know the construction dates off the top of my head, but we can double check.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council on this renovation at St. Harris? Any comments from the public? Yes, please come forward, guys. Mr. Ford? Good to see you. I think I just need your name to be so repetitive.
Amy D. Batin, 97th Circuit Street. I'm just curious, is that a public basketball court? Is that something that anybody in the public knows who would use? Or, I mean, there are a lot of schools and facilities, I just wanted to know.
I'm getting a headcount that says yes. I think in order to comply with the federal CDVG departments, you have the economic stability for any other all the community.
There's not a basketball courts in the schools?
Certainly not in this part of town where, you know, we did it one time, we had a basketball court at Magnolia School, but you know, the Magnolia School was sold for condos many years ago.
Are there lead school, no school, high school, junior high school, I don't know whether they're open?
There are, there are some there, but not certainly around the Moby Road, Park Avenue area, which, that's what they're only.
Check. Maybe, why don't you discuss how the CD, community development operates inside?
There's an application. There's an application process and there's an ability to collect the money so that an application is made at some point in the last several years and available to the public.
Jack, also with the schools, they're private and aren't near the city, so it's definitely closed and so that would be a difference as well.
We're very glad that these questions are coming up because it is a church, St. Mary's is a Catholic church, and we are a governmental agency, so it's important to hear from everyone. Ms. Belisavich, if you have a question, please come forward. Good to see you too. Welcome.
Mayor's office, I'm Jay Gordon, I'm in Long Beach. East School and the Old School, my basketball program, just to answer that, and Linda. But who's going to run these programs at St. Mary's? Does that come under the auspices of the Long Beach Direct? Is anyone who go in there who's responsible if somebody gets hurt?
Good question.
I don't believe it's a question of a program, I think it's a question of the facility. And the answer is, if it's a public facility, it's still retained, the ownership is still retained, I would think by the owner of the property.
But you're fixing it. I know of years come, years past, if we put something in PTA in a playground, we would kind of, we have to be very careful.
The liability in the exposure stays with St. Mary's. It's still their facility which the public has access to, it doesn't necessarily convert it, therefore it should be a public facility. Does that make sense?
No. Not at all. I mean, we have signs over the beach, if they don't swim, they're still going to swim if they drown. I mean, it happens. We live in that.
Oh, well, anybody who's afraid, anybody, only if it's a public case, it will come up.
So we're just doing this to make a facility available for anybody who wants to... Are there going to be organized leagues or something?
That's outside my range, actually.
Can I ask a question? The church that requested this? Okay, so this is, so I assume, maybe I'm wrong, if the church would be organizing it, this is money that is owing to the church, like I say, why are we trying to think about it?
Good question, Ms. Owen. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions on this item? Sure, please come forward.
Just to correct something. Ken Paul, this is California Street.
Very good, thank you.
That building already is a basketball court. They don't have a little floor, I think that's, I'm just, I'm just, so that is a basketball court already, so I just wanted to know that. So that makes it a basketball court, then the rest I suppose.
Very good, good point. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions on this item regarding the renovation of the basketball courts at St. Mary's? Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our next item.
And I have called a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of orders from the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. This item is a publication only here until July 5th at 2:00 PM.
Okay, on to the voting.
And one is resolution writing the order of parking requirements for purpose 776 West Beach Street for shade ice court.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I'll let you do it. I'm sorry.
And that's okay, I have a second.
Oh, wait, I forgot.
Yes, and I believe the landlord is here, so if you could extend congratulations to the owner and wish that person good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I vote yes.
Absolutely, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes, congratulations.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes, just to echo our key councilwoman, Galian, please extend our welcome to the business owner. And thank you for being here for that business. My vote is yes.
And two is a resolution writing the way the Bolshy Park requires for purpose 772 West Beach Street for real estate management office.
Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
I vote yes, and again, congratulations to the owner and good luck in Long Beach.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Captain McGowan, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes, congratulations.
Captain Moore, Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
You know, the property management is also a very important part of, you know, keeping our city, you know, in the quality that we expect. And we welcome this, and welcome this business coming to Long Beach. My vote is yes.
I agree with the resolution authorizing adopting the city of Long Beach employee policy. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
I'm proud to be voting yes on this important amendment to our Long Beach employee policy manual. As one of the speakers, I believe, said, it will send a message to other municipalities in Long Island and also New York State who will hopefully follow by example. I believe it's an important revision because it recognizes and acknowledges the real need to protect individuals who unfortunately face discrimination and harassment because of their gender identity. So, thank you to all the speakers for coming tonight, the people that came up, I appreciate it, and I vote yes. Proud to vote yes.
As was said earlier tonight, it's our responsibility to implement necessary change. This is, no doubt, a necessary change. Clearly, from what I vote yes. Captain Moore.
As a city, we still have a long way to go with respect to addressing the issues of discrimination as well as sexual harassment. Once again, there are many of my colleagues that I can say personally had to leave Long Beach because they just did not feel that this was a safe community. And so today, the city shines even brighter as we move to rid ourselves of this institution of discrimination based on gender identity as well as expression. It's my hope that we will also move quickly to protect those who are people of color, who are part of this community, who are sometimes forgotten as we have this conversation. So with that being said, my vote is yes.
Vice President Moore.
Long Beach is a very diverse community where there is no room for hate or discrimination. I'm very proud to vote for this. I'm very proud that the city is going to host Pride Fest next year. And my hope is that other municipalities or even the state follows Long Beach's lead. Once again, Long Beach is leading. My vote is yes.
President Torres.
You know, I too, just to echo what my colleagues have said here on the council, this is a day to celebrate because, again, you know, it's something that I have to say over and over again that makes me very proud to be a part of this council. My vote is absolutely yes on this. Thank you.
And four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay administrative costs under the Emergency Tenant Protection Act, authorizing the passing on administrative costs to the owners of the buildings included under such act, and directing the city control to make building therefore. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I'll let you do second.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And five is resolution authorizing the city manager to extend the current agreement for animal shelter services. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
I just want to say that Posh Pets has done a fantastic job and has brought awareness in Long Beach and has done so much for the animals. And so I'm very happy to extend the contract and continue working with this organization. So I vote yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase replacement parts with primary clarifier as a water pollution control plant for the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for drainage, venting, and electrical renovations to the city's swimming pool. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And made this resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for the furnishing and installation of new doors in the city's ice arena for the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I'll let you do second.
Second? Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the engineering services in conjunction with the requalification of the sand filter and filter building in the wastewater treatment. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
And President Torres.
Yes.
And I intend the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for street lighting maintenance and repair. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And eleven is a resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds for the conversion of the existing order to order in parish wall and sanctuaries of the island to a basketball court. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I'll let you do second.
Second? Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan, right now.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes, and I also hope that we can make sure and ensure that communication is properly handled, so that we can make sure that it's public use, that the members of the community will feel comfortable being in and being educated about who's able, what are the criteria, what criteria will be, because this is once again our responsibility. Then I say yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
And item twelve is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of orders from the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding motor vehicles and traffic. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
Would you motion close me?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain McGowan.
Yes.
Captain Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Moore.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes, and as we end the city council meeting, we begin our good and well fair portion of our meeting, this part of our meeting is extremely important because we get to hear your concerns that are above and beyond the items we discuss. These items have been, in the past, very important and leading towards legislation, and we welcome everyone to participate in that. Our first person that we have that will be sharing with us is Mr. Ken Paul. Welcome, welcome again, Paul. Good to see you all.
Can I repeat my name again? We have 10476 California Street. I'm here tonight to discuss an issue. I'm so happy that we're against those sorts of discrimination. But this town is very friendly, is bike friendly, is everything friendly, but pedestrian friendly. I've got hit on sidewalks two times in the last year. One right in front of Plaza here, one in New York here at Beach Street. I almost got hit on the ramp on New York here into the wall, so I took my walking. And just last Tuesday, I put those meetings last Tuesday, I got on all my frienduinos on sidewalk. The only person I see signs on National Evidence Riverside, it says no bike riding business district. It doesn't say no bike riding sidewalk. I mean, I want to know, number one, I allow to ride, I'm black, I put those statements saying anybody over 10 years old cannot ride by on sidewalk. And I want to know what you're going to do because I walk, so I don't run a bike, I'm not sick, but I have rights still, and I feel very strongly, if I get hit anymore, I've had it replaced me, it replaced it, I have a lung out, so I try to do my things. But this, to me, is very discriminatory. Everybody else gets five or two as an over doing this to everybody, but not to me, pedestrian. And how can you be 76 years old still fight the seniors? Because a lot of the seniors do walk.
As far as we, we fully agree with you, and there's no question that that's an important point that you're making. I see that our police commissioner is here, maybe that Mr....
But I did go, I did go to the police station house downstairs, I spoke to the gentleman down there, he said, I was told by the police officer, there's no way to enforce this.
Well, let's hear what the question is.
No, I'm just saying, trust all that we saw.
Absolutely, and of course, it was amazing, my wife and I were shopping in Costco, and of course, we were, of course, questioned in Costco about that the person was injured. And we welcome, we welcome these comments. That's all we need to, we need to hear, see what is that we can do and cannot do. Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Paul. Welcome, Commissioner Taggany, good to see you.
Good evening. We do very vigorous bicycle enforcement. Unfortunately, it is an epidemic in town. People do use the sidewalks to ride, we do have side jaffo in the Central District as well as the West End, and with some of their issue, we use the summer specials on the boardwalk to do the ramp enforcement, and we have the regular specials that patrol park in, we do parking enforcement between the school courses that do the regular enforcement. Unfortunately, the specials are on foot, so the bicycles can loop them very easily, but they are very aggressive with it, and we will continue to monitor the situation and enforce it as vigorously as possible. I don't know why this was to tell anyone, there's nothing we can do. We never use that expression about anything. If there's something that we don't know how to handle, we bring in experts to give us assistance, but there's nothing we can do.
Commissioner, it's so important for you to be here to answer folks, because that's been, you know, usually what people come back to me and say, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I just want to follow up, Mr. Paul said 10 years and under, is okay to be on the sidewalk?
No, no, there's a whole series of regulations regarding riding bicycles. There's no riding bicycles in this district, clearly, that's our policy, our charter. There's no, anyone under 10 can ride on the sidewalks in the residential neighborhood, just don't want three-year-olds riding in the street. But anyone above the age of 10 is supposed to ride in the streets. And in addition, you know, we hear about the cause of violation, stop signs, speeding over light, technically, a bicycle is supposed to follow every single rule of the road. Stop at red lights, stop at stop signs, right? It's just a monumental task for the police to enforce, especially in such a big bike community. And we have the greatest HOD bike lane in the world, which is a little bit south of here on the boardwalk, and we do try to encourage people to use that, that's one of the goals of the shadows that have been painted up east, is to get people to the boardwalk where it should be much safer to ride.
Commissioner, can I ask a question? The business district, does that extend the entire length of Park Avenue, or is it limited to the downtown trade district?
It's limited to the four business districts, the one on the 601 of East Park, the one one on the 300 block of East Park, this whole central area from my road to Lafayette, and then from New York to Nevada.
I also have a question as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Pahr, for bringing that up, and of course, this is still at the center of much discussion, we do, and thank you again. Do you have now this Mary?
Sorry, I have no question on this matter.
Usually that's not how we do that, we, you have to sign up to speak.
Oh, I was here, it's about the business district.
Is your name on here?
No, I can't decide, I've been just taking the thing away.
Yeah, no, the rule is that you must sign up during the time that we're holding our city council meeting.
But I could get up and speak about the same subject.
Well, we can't do that, there's, the rule has been that you have to sign up.
Usually you ask if there's anyone else that wants to talk about the subject, I can't talk about this subject?
No, I think that that's, I'm sorry, we won't be able to do this.
During the regular meeting, you can speak on any, on any agenda, we ask virtual congress of the public, this is a little section that you have to sign up for, if you're moving, and you, each individual can speak on whatever they signed up for. We don't take additional speakers after the close of the regular meeting.
Well, sorry, ma'am, we appreciate your opinion too. Ms. Billis Edich?
Hi, I'm Billis Edich, Greenberry Street, going to New York, speaking on behalf of the Long Beach Bay Association. We had a meeting last week, a couple of things were brought up that I said I would bring to your attention. We have a gentleman, the north side of Pine, suggested we could have into those reflector mirrors because it's very hard to see traffic coming from the east. Anyone in turn may go heading west, you really have to pull out almost into the street.
What streets again did you mention?
These are the, the north side of East Pine. There are stop zones, but unless you pull out, you can't really see because people pull, park along East Pine, and some of the older people, and I'm not that old, but I think you have to really pull out, and there's a danger of getting in front of your car yet because of trucks and landscapers and construction and just regular cars. There are signs that say no vehicles over five feet, but, you know, like other signs, some people don't pay attention. So we were just suggesting maybe, they're round reflective mirrors that would point that way, they could look at it and actually see the cars coming, so you don't pull out. Also, there was a question about the bathrooms, you know, after Memorial Day, a lot of people, especially retired people, they by their way, they walk on the road, hopefully people come into town, and that's their exercise, but the bathrooms aren't open. Is there any way we can have the bathrooms open for a few hours during the day, like 11 to 4, when people are up there biking and walking? Movie nights, I would just like to say, in the beginning you mentioned the movie nights, you did not mention East Home Civic, who joined the other cities this year in presenting the movie nights, and we are still getting sponsors, and we'll be very lucky in getting the movies that we need. And the last thing is Clark Street, what is the status of redoing that? I've been asked by several parents, maybe the summer's coming, and they take the kids to the water park there.
Commissioner, why don't you look it up? Please do.
There were four questions, if I may correct?
Well, some were just, could we go against it?
The bathroom and the Clark Street Park, I think. So, we can start with bathrooms. Year-round, the city keeps Riverside and Lafayette open. Do the only two bathrooms that we maintain in the off-season, the rest of the restrooms along the boardwalk and along the beach, for that matter, at Pacific Virginia, they're only open when the beach is open. That's what we have staff to maintain them. I don't have the funding or the personnel to take care of all the bathrooms along the boardwalk year-round. I took another production, this budget coming up July 1st, and I have a part-time workforce, so it's just not something that's possible to keep them all open all the time. So we do leave the two open, and they're being maintained by, by beach maintenance staff year-round. With respect to Clark Street Park, we're just finalizing a bid document for that, the safety surface will be replaced in the park, we're going to be doing some fence alterations, we're going to be replacing the, the trail that was in the back, the walkway, some benches along the bayfront, 24-foot by 24-foot shady shelter is going to be installed, and depending on how the codes come back, we're also looking at a kayak launch, if we can, if we can swim with the funding that we have available. Those are the items that we're discussing with the community, we'll remember them at the school. And that impact is, I guess, I think it's going on the next couple of weeks. The bathrooms open full-time on Friday, this Friday, this Saturday will be open starting Saturday, Sunday, we, you know, the long side, the, the con side of the beach.
And there's also extended hours when there are concerts, correct, and also movie night?
Extended hours for concerts, movie nights, whatever events we have at the event, they extend beyond the normal closing time. We keep the bathrooms open to accommodate the folks at that event.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I think that there were issues of traffic safety and perhaps...
All right, it's just a suggestion with these, the round mirrors, I'm sure you've seen that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it just makes it easier when you're pulling out, the mirrors over here, people can see the oncoming traffic.
I think it's a very good suggestion.
Because we have a lot of closed booths.
Right. We need to hear from our police commissioner about that because there's logistics involved, and again, welcome, Mr. Taggany.
Yes, there is very interesting logistic in Long Beach, the sunlight is in the east and sets in the west, and that goes nearest close to Tremendous Glare, and it likes some blind drivers that go east and west on Pine Street. We have tried mirrors in other areas of town, and that's been our experience with it, so, you know, you just trade your problems. The, no vehicles over five foot, that is the key, key answer, it works in the President Street, it works in the west end, it works up in the canals, and again, the community policing dictate, if there's ever a vehicle in that area, we will get to it on our own, whether it's someone that's bothering people or anyone observes it, you know, it's, we have to keep, retain the mantra, if you see something, say something, you know, it's a responsibility we all have to work together to ensure the safety of everyone in Long Beach.
Absolutely, and there's a question that always comes up, Commissioner, to me, about Monroe and Park Avenue, and folks making a right on red, and of course, they can't see the traffic because the cars parked along that side there, and so what happens is they jump in front of an oncoming car, and because they can't see it coming. The question is, are those people allowed to park there, blocking the view from people making right on red? Maybe right on red is the issue.
Right on red is the issue, and this spring, we made the entire business district, all four directions, go turn on reds.
Very good, very good.
So we avoided that problem.
Commissioner, thank you, thank you. This all is, thank you so much, you were very good suggestions, Commissioner. We have now Mr. Marcus Tinker. Marcus, welcome.
Hi. Good to see you. Marcus Tinker, 25th Street, West Market Street, in Long Beach. First I'll start off, I want to commend Officer Allen and his partner for walking Channel Park home this morning, I went through there to hand out supplies, I did see them, patrol in the area, which is good to see. Now, onto my two questions. We do our community walks on Friday out in the North Park area, this includes a vulnerable road. I also want to meet some more, myself, Ronnie Miles, Steve Morton, and from time to time, James Hodgman, because when we walked around this past Friday, we noticed on East Pine Street, East Fulton Street, East Hudson, East Market, the back end of Birch Court, and like two other sections in Channel Park, very dark. And with that, it's very dangerous for any residents who are walking by. It's dangerous for anybody, whether it's a kid, it's a woman, man, whoever, because it's a criminal even, if it's a dark area, people can hide out, hop out, rob you, so who would address making sure the lighting in those areas is fixed?
Are lighting not working, or is it that there is no light?
It was not working well at all on Friday night, it's very dark, you can barely see it in council.
Just lighting on one side of the street feels, so on the other side, it's just complete darkness.
Look into that.
All right, the other question is, when we did the walk, we walked for close to an hour, and this is no disrespect to the Commissioner, you know, on his, on his, on his dashboard, whether he did not see one cop car, our entire walk, we did not see any cops on foot patrol in Channel Park, and near the streets on the east side of the North Park area. They don't have to walk each block, the whole length of the block, but from time to time, it'd be good for someone to get out of their car, they see it, some crowded people, you know, get out, introduce themselves, this way the residents know, you know, that's the community policing we can ask for, you know, not ask for anybody to be shot or harassed or anything like that, but just build a relationship by talking to them. Commissioner does that, he goes door to door, you know, over at Channel Park, he did that last summer, and he's going to start doing it east side with a few of us and some of his officers, so I commend him for that, but the actual day-to-day offices that the residents see riding back and forth, they don't know, so if an incident happens, they don't want to be comfortable coming to the police, because they don't know you're going to come see you and tell you anything, so when you hear the community policing constantly being requested, it's because people want to have the relationship, so if something happens, they feel comfortable telling you. So how can we address the lighting issue and manage those sort of questions?
So we're going to take what you're sending into us, and we appreciate you coming and putting this to our attention, and thank you, thank you.
Torres, I think it's important, because we do have a Commissioner here, if you would just come forward, and just share with us at this time?
Sure.
As I said earlier, we are very aggressive with community policing, we started, we still have a brief council, we have one with the cops, so there was done to get into the schools, to start very early with children, to build those long-term relationships, this year was fifth grade, they started just in sixth grade. We, our call volume doubles and sometimes triples on the weekends when the summer comes. The west end has a lot of issues, you know, Park has a lot of issues, in addition to last Sunday, we had three issues that came with informants of each other, missing eight-year-old autistic boy, Palabuda, he's in Atlantic Beach that was missing, and a, a report of a swimmer that was rescued and doing CPR in Beach. The missing autistic child took the entire force for four hours, they were dedicated to that search, organizing volunteers, went up Friday, a child in East Meadow. The Palabuda was a three-day search, the family invested quite a cost of $1,000, they had to go on planes and helicopters. When the summer's here, it gets very busy, there just is not the time to, to get out on Friday night, you know, but my budget, as Commissioner Lewis said, was also cut, I've limited the overtime on Friday nights, last year I put out two bikes and a sardine every Friday night, this year I've been saving for Saturday night, because that isn't busy the two nights, to try to stay within the budget, so it's, it's actually a question of resources and prioritizing. There was a woman that called last weekend about kids, men that were standing on their roof drinking, we didn't get to that, they would, they had already stopped by the time we capitalized because of the priorities that we had to have in saving lives of the other individuals, or trying to save lives of the individuals. So there is a bit of a balancing that goes on, like I said, we went from 220 quolls in the winter, last weekend we have almost 500, so that's where the cops are.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you so much, and thank you for clarifying that. Again, thank you, Mr. Tinker, and we have Ms. Megan Casey. Casey, you're here, welcome.
My name's Megan Casey, I want to add a few questions. I'd like to talk about the cleaning team initiative.
Speaking for the mayor, Mr. Tinker.
Please, please, I should be able to.
Better?
Yes.
So I want to talk about the cleaning team initiative, or the fines that are going to be imposed on businesses throughout town for, I'm sorry, sidewalks, okay? To keep it brief, my point is, while everybody would agree that having a clean street is sidewalks is a good thing, I have to mention that it's, if you look around, a lot of businesses and residents are already taking care of it. I believe businesses who were found to be, you know, being messed in our sidewalks are applying for two months of warranty. So that mind, most businesses come in, they clean up fresh in the morning, then they clean up during the day. Let's see, the Shines Bar, they, you know, they have their 8:00 AM, they clean sidewalks today. And there's some guys staff during the day, who's cleaning after the day, on busy nights on Friday and Saturdays of the summer, there's a bar dining for it, and specifically they're cleaning up the sidewalks clean, and that's where they're free to be out to the street, people can never see where I bought, they have this pole, this pole. I'm just concerned that volumes never could be defined, posed, for something that's already paying this premium. I wonder, and I asked, the teams that will be cleaned, will they come again every morning 8:00 AM, will the boardroom really be coming at once a week, or 12:00 AM? If our sidewalks are cleaned by 8:00 AM, so many children are on their way to school, they're laid out with the buses in front of us, people go to church in the morning, will the sidewalk be cleaned for our standards, you know, as we're already in? I brought with me a good neighbor award, a bar, we're having a, certainly, you know, really nice clean sidewalk. You take a lot of pride in our business, and I think we have residents here, neighbors here, who are doing, we're doing a good job, and many of the businesses in the west end, you know, can't see 3% of accounts so much, I don't get out that far, but a lot of businesses in the west end do a very good job of keeping their businesses in check, right? Maybe not some of the ones that aren't there year-round, but the ones that are there, they are in relation, but doing the endeavors in respect. I also wonder about the commercial sanitation fee. Many businesses apply the oral sanitation service because it's more prospect of cheaper service. These guys come with a camera trash, they're wandering for the commercial sanitation fee for, for, for us, we're already paid, so we take the trash away, and we take it away right away. So I guess the long and short of it is, if we're doing our part, and already paying these things happen, why would we maintain businesses? You know, we're talking about fairness and, and welcoming the businesses to town, and it's wonderful, but we need to protect businesses that are already struggling to take, to improve, yeah, sure.
Ms. Casey, thank you so much for that comment and the question. I don't know if we have a response from either of these divisions?
Sure. I would, again, I would, I would just mention that, two things, first regarding the commercial sanitation, in consultation with the chamber, we're going to actually suspend implementation of the minimum sanitation fee, or commercial sanitation, for three months while we work to see if there's a way that we can do it in a way that's more amenable for businesses, so it's something that we're happy to keep in touch with you on as well, and have a long conversation about sort of the theory behind it, and what the goals are, and what the current challenges are. Regarding the cleaning fee specifically, to answer your question most succinctly, there will be folks in shifts all day in the west end cleaning, as well as in the center of the city, so they'll, they'll be cleaning throughout the day, scheduled in shifts.
Can I just ask, are they just going to be sweeping the sidewalks?
Basically what you just described, sweeping the sidewalk, picking up litter, doing a variety of things.
They're just making up cigarette butts?
All day.
Okay.
Yep. And it's going to be a pilot program for six months, and we're going, we're going to see how it goes. It would be a wonderful problem to have, would be if it was no longer, no longer necessary thing to do, but as, as you pointed out quite well, we've been inundated with complaints now about the cleanliness of, of the downtown, both in the center of the city and the west end, and, and I have no doubt that you're right, that Shines does a terrific job, as, you know, I've been living in the west end for quite a long time, running in the morning myself, I saw people about cleaning, and I appreciate it.
I'm just sorry, about your question, two things, one, if, if our sidewalks are already cleaned, how will this, this temporary period prove that they're cleaning my sidewalks when my sidewalks are being cleaned already?
It's completely possible to clean the entirety of downtown.
And then the second question is, you know, instead of issuing a new law, will we simply enforce the existing law and define the businesses that are, you know, in violation of their property?
We haven't, and hasn't had the desired effect, it's a conversation that's been going on in the city and with the chamber for a period of time now, but we're happy to talk about it more in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just wanted, I just wanted to add, yeah, as Jack Schirr just pointed out, it is a pilot project, because we have received complaints from certain people, and, and the, the concerns that you have, which are fair in terms of equity, and why should one business have to contribute if that business is doing a good job in cleaning, so it is a pilot project, I encourage you to come back within this six-month period, because we need to hear from the businesses as to how it's going, and then we will, and I'll encourage that we reevaluate depending on the input that we get. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing your real and legitimate concerns, and I encourage you to come back during this six-month period, thank you.
Again, Ms. Casey, thank you, thank you, Ms. Tinker. We now have Mr. Joe Wilson. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Wilson, 1083 West Park Avenue, resident, plus Megan's father-in-law, reconnoit with my son Brent, home shines, he always continuing to operate in business, people are very proud of that. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to reinforce the point that we understand there is, you know, on the books, you know, codes that should be enforced, and I, you know, I don't see... And I, you know, I don't see what the issue is having folks, it's not when you're trying to catch bike riders on sidewalks, several lose and what have you. But, you know, it's pretty easy to go up and down Main Street out here with the west end and identify those culprits. Okay, those few that are making it difficult for the rest of us, that are doing our community job. So that's where I really have that issue. It's on the books, you can find them. Why do we have to jump to this next step? I know you say it's a pilot project, but that pilot project is not going to cost us $1,000 more. And we have a small footprint. We, we are very small compared to our, you know, wonderful competitors in town. And we all get a little bit. But this money is very, very significant to us, okay? We are still in a recovery mode from Sandy. People, we're forty without, almost people tend to forget about that. But we still are behind in a number of bills that we have to pay to some of our vendors. Because if we didn't have a very good May, whether they cooperate, you know, you know, normally we can count in the summer. But for businesses ourselves, we really hope for spring and fall to put it together. Because in the middle of the winter, you know, we only got a few that we can count on. And we need this time of year to help out. And any additional fee, whether it be 500, 1,000, 1,500, it's tough, it's very tough. So my main point is, is that if there is something on the books to enforce, why don't we try to do that first? Before we put some, another financial burden on business people who are behaving and have been community, you know, plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And we appreciate your comments. And again, these are things that we're looking into also, how to improve these things. Your, your point is very well made.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, you know, at the end of our city council meeting and the good welfare. Again, we believe in Bush government and the only way Bush government can work is if we come and you make comments. But that, thank you again. Have a nice evening, again.